PM, we will call the meeting to order. First thing is to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yes, we need to add those five.
Oh, yeah. The amendments?
There were two documents attached to the email and I only opened up one of them.
Oh. Sure.
So I hope we can do each one of them separately probably because they're each.
Because they're each yes or no.
We can and I can explain. They're pretty straightforward.
So it's one through five.
One through five, yep.
After the. Sure. Yep. So we're gonna add some amendments after South Dakota High School Association representative stuff. There's five of them. Any other changes? That you guys know? All right, I'll take a motion to adopt. Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll have the reading of the mission and the vision statement.
All right, it is my privilege to introduce to you fifth grader Austin Von I. Parents are Justin and Jen Von I. He has one brother, Kayden Von I, in eighth grade. Austin's favorite subject is science. He also enjoys playing youth football, shooting hoops in the driveway, swimming, attending the sporting events held here, and then just spending time with his friends and cousins. And I'm also very happy to announce that he's chosen a good team and is a huge Minnesota Vikings fan. Take it away, Austin.
Dual school mission statement and beliefs. Mission statement. Empowers students to become independent learners, personally accountable and responsible citizens. Belief statement. Dual school district believes everyone in the community contributes to the education of the children in our school. Therefore, we are committed to personal responsibility and accountability, respecting others and maintaining an open line of communication in the district, providing opportunities and resources for individual success, maintaining and communicating high academic and professional standards.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And you guys can leave now unless you want to stay for the whole thing. Yeah. Thank you. All right. I forgot Mr. Mack was next. Public comment, we have Mr. Mack.
All right, so, uh, may I use this projector?
Okay.
It's not in your eyes. Put up a little presentation for you guys. On Wednesday of last week, I met with.
And the.
Then did a lot of the basketball games for Boys varsity and then.
Sure.
Possibly did a lot of the volleyball last year.
Presentations were good.
Yeah, we had fantastic commentators.
Comical.
Yeah, very entertaining. Well, how neat is this? So the links and people that they get, they'll say the same so people won't have to redo like their favorites or anything, or will that change?
Uh, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I know, because right now, what is it, is the link, is it say dual multimedia?
I think it'll change then.
That maybe would change.
Yep.
But I think it'd be worth it. One thing that I know Michelle brought up was, will be Cardinals Live, but we'll also keep kind of the dual name on the webpage as well just because we know there are other schools out there that have.
Yeah.
The Cardinal Mass. Yeah, we.
So fun.
Did that out there and hopefully I know Mr. Elsens got his emails and updated people on the chain. The ITC one would be off that.
Right. Neat. Thanks for sharing that with us. All right. Move on to conflict of interest. None? All right, next is the approval of the consent agenda. Agenda, one being the meeting minutes from April fourteenth, special meeting April twenty first and April twenty third, and also the April payroll. I'll take a motion. On favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next is talking about the gymnastics co-op.
I brought this up before, uh, the gymnastics season this fall. And at that point in time, we just kind of agreed to, hey, let's put it off and bring it up after the season. I have been in contact with Dewbrook. They want to pursue as they did earlier, but as of right now, they have one sixth grader and one seventh grader that's involved in the program. So I told Brad DeBir that I would be bringing this to the board. We can have a discussion on it. And then, no decisions are gonna be made tonight, but then we would, we would vote on it over the summer here. I have reached out to Coach Kozniewski and got her opinion on it. She is definitely in favor of it. She feels with declining numbers that we have right now in gymnastics, it would be a benefit to the program. And she's also quick to say that there's other schools out there that would gobble these girls up in the event that, that we don't, with one of them being Hendrick. So, um, so I got some feedback from her and I just wanted to open up to you guys and just feel, I know we went through this once with Camby. Just wanted to get some feedback from you guys and get a, get a gauge where we're at going into the next month. I don't know if we've had a whole lot of parent feedback.
Do they know about it?
I don't, I don't know right now. I'm just resurrecting it. Something that we could surely get put out to them before now and next month and share their thoughts on it as well.
I'm, you know, my opinion on it just doesn't change. There was just a fair amount of opposition in the last one for parents. There was some form, a fair amount against it. I guess if you hit the majority of the parents at the point, I guess I'd be, I'd be okay with it. But I guess I would, I don't know, I'd like to hear from some of the parents. I'd like to, I don't know, have them sign something or do something. I guess to know that they can formally talk to and that everybody's fully aware of what's going on.
If we can just get a report maybe from Coach Caitlin, or not Caitlin, Morgan, excuse me.
Yeah, Morgan.
Yeah. This situation's different. It's a smaller number. We already co-op with wrestling. What else? What other information helps with the decision, saying yes or no?
Just makes it easier for the parents, I don't know.
Yeah, but is there anything else in addition to that too?
Those parents' kids who moved out from their old residence. And I wish, you know, I don't know.
Anything you guys?
Like, I mean, you gotta, you gotta keep the numbers in when you want to have a program, so. And it's, you know, wait, wait it a little bit that way too.
Questions from Tony and I'm putting you on the spot, but you haven't been kind of through this. Is there questions that you maybe have?
Process basically is just some, some paperwork which involves approval from their school board, our school board, and then an agreement that, uh, it's pretty informal that we'd have to submit to the activities association along with the conditions. That would include a monetary exchange if needed and another big thing is typically transportation. Who the coaches are gonna be, uniforms, those types of things. So, um, those are just some of the ancillary pieces that go along with it. But, um, it's usually, the co-ops that we've been involved in haven't been a huge amount of money being exchanged, five hundred to maybe a thousand dollars if that, just to offset coaching stipends and maybe uniforms. And that would have to be done by, the agreement would have to be done by October. The season's starting in November.
For sure, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
For sure. I know the last time she had granted me a little bit of leeway because we were, we were up against it, but she's no longer there either.
I think the sooner we can do it, then parents know and the kids know, and the better, and everyone, so.
Yeah, we can get, we can gauge and see where, we'll get some feedback on it, but I just wanted.
Those kids, just like Camby's kids were training at Earth Center or anything.
Yeah, I think these are in.
I don't know that that's true.
Rookings from what I, from what I can remember, so. Yeah, the Camby girls were training here at County Twisters, so. No, I just wanted to gauge, see if you guys had an appetite for it. If, if that's the case, we will move forward with getting some more feedback.
I would either encourage a meeting with the parents or I wonder if we send out all, like, letter is the better format. So they have, I'm fully aware of, I guess, that's, I just don't, I don't want to approve something that.
No.
Somebody says, I didn't know anything about it. So I just want to make sure that everything is covered that way, so.
And I agree with that, but we also can't make our decision based on a couple of parents who might have older high school kids too. I mean, I totally agree with what you're saying.
I'd say a majority. We need to have a majority of the parents that we, you know, that we.
Yeah, gathered and we'll review and make a decision based on that. Any other info to be needed for the next meeting? So I'd like to talk about this again in June just to get it done with, if we have time for feedback from parents by then. Okay, anything else? All right, we will, there's nothing to vote on there. We will move on to new business and review the financial report for the month ending in April. And that page starts on ten. Any questions or comments with that? Anything else from you guys? I'll take a motion to approve it. Second? On favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll review the April bills, page sixteen and seventeen. Any questions from you guys? Or any Ellen that you wanted to point out that maybe are new or different?
Bill is probably, that's probably where we're gonna be at now with, once we're settled everywhere, with everything there, so. What's that? Well, that one is, yeah, it's almost ten thousand dollars. I think that's what it's gonna be because I think now after we, they got everything figured out, hopefully, that's what it'll, what it'll be, so.
Those weren't the wells in the old playground?
Yep. Classrooms.
Yep. Deal.
Anything else? Or if I can take a motion to approve? On favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the county fairgrounds title.
Just a brief, uh, synopsis of what's transpired over the last couple of months. We have, between the county and the city and the school, there have been some questions raised as to who leases what piece and who owns the titles to these and what lease agreements have been made over the years. So, um, there was a lot of fact finding and not many facts found to see who's, who actually has what lease. We went through leases back to the early nineteen hundreds and we've actually met with Todd Boyd, the, um, county commissioner representative as well as the city representatives. And right now, um, there's a number of leases that conflict in regards to the physical, uh, physical part of it. They don't match up with, um, what we have, what the county has out there for land. So we were all in agreement that we are going to do, um, some surveying out there and then basically reset the boundaries of what we all, we have, which for the school is the football field and the practice field to the north. And then, of course, there is the baseball field, which at one time was the football and track field. And then, of course, the softball field. So the city, city subleases the softball field. The city has maintained the baseball field and then obviously the school, um, what I just talked about. And then the four H grounds are, um, the county. So everything is owned by the county, but the, the lease or the, the lease agreements are, like I said, they're just kind of a mess. And I have a feeling that a lot of this stuff was done with shaking the hand along the way and everybody just took care of it for the good of, the good of the cause. So, um, we had received, uh, the direction from Todd Boyd, lawyer Todd Boyd, to proceed with legal proceedings needing to clarify, verify, and therefore resolve the issues regarding the current title to the county fairgrounds and surrounding areas. So that is actually the motion that will need to be made by the board so we can start that process and square it away. From what I understand, it's a timely process, so they will need to survey it and, and move forward. City as well as the county commissioners are making this same, same motion to clarify it. So in another seventy-five years, we don't need to go through the same thing and spend, spend two days reading leases like Ellen and I did, so. Any, any questions on anything?
Where's the original?
They don't, they conflict each other. The boundaries are different. Yeah. That and the measurements are different. Some of them are done with feet, some of them are done with the northeast corner, southwest part of the forty acres. And not all of the leases were registered. Not, not all of them were registered with the courthouse, and not all of them were registered with the city, so. Actually, Ellen had one that nobody had, and that was for the softball field, so. We made a lot of phone calls to people that were involved out there over the years, and nobody had a real good answer to, to anything, so.
So there is an agreement, there is not an agreement to just throw all that out and start over?
It's basically what-
That is what you're gonna do?
It's basically what this involves.
So if you get all the parties involved that agree on that, then they'll just survey it out and we'll have our lease.
The only common part that we shared out there was the parking lot. So, but, that, that, that too is a little sketchy.
And the cost of this, we talked a little bit about it last week, or last month?
I don't have an exact cost.
And that's gonna be shared by-
It'll be shared by all three entities.
City, county, and-
Yes, yep. And we have put dollars into the budget for that.
So we'll need to motion to approve the action to pursue that activity?
Yep, yep.
Can't make a motion to look the other way and move on.
And hope for the best?
Forget we brought this up.
No, because then we could own the whole thing.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and do it. I don't know if we have a record, I don't know, you know, we're at that spot where this is the best thing, is to have everybody agree to start over.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Instead of going back and trying to figure everything out.
On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, I'm gonna screw these up every time, South Dakota High School Association, Small School Board of Education Representative.
You start on page twenty, if you want to take a look at these and follow along with me. I know a lot of these people, so hopefully-
I didn't, I read them all the last time, and then you just suggested some.
Hopefully you trust, hopefully, hopefully you trust me. I might give a very abbreviated version of the amendments as well. The first one here is Billy Clanton, who I do not know, but he's the only one that is on the, on the ballot.
Are we gonna make a motion on each one, or?
Yep.
Yeah, we do.
So if he's the only one, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to vote for it.
Okay. Vote for him? On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. South Dakota High School Association Activity, uh, see, I told you, East River at Large Representative, on page twenty-two.
Uh, page twenty-two, I do not know any of these people. So I am going to default to the school that's probably closest in size to us, uh, which probably has a lot of the same things that we, that we do, so that would be Groton, Shelby Edwards.
Anything else there? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. On favor, say aye? Opposed?
Tony, second.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry. Yep, Wade, then Tony. Nobody opposed, motion carried. The next is the Division One Representative, on page twenty-six.
Yep, I actually know Steve Moore, he was a athletic director in Watertown for a few years, and I got to know him when I was the athletic director, so I know he would be a, a good representation, I would suggest voting. Casting a vote for Steve Moore.
I'll make a motion to do so.
On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next is South Dakota High School Association, Division Three Representative, on page twenty-nine.
I actually know both of these gentlemen, um, but I will go with Jeff Sheehan from Hamlin. I know he's tried to get on the board before, so.
Well, second.
On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll do the amendments, starting with Amendment One, on page thirty-one.
Actually, I had the opportunity to listen to Dr. Sworos on Wednesday, he was at our superintendent meeting, and he, he talked briefly on these amendments. Uh, all of these amendments are, are made to just basically coincide with some of the changes or things that they ran into at the Activities Association, so they've, they've done this to, to, to stop some things. Your first two amendments, Amendment One and Two, now granted, we're gonna have to vote on them separately, they deal with trimesters. So there's getting to be a few more schools that have trimesters instead of semesters, so they're just reflecting that, that wording in these two amendments, so. I would, I would vote, obviously, number, vote yes on number one here, Amendment One.
Okay, can I get a vote for a yes? Tony? Thank you. On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll vote on Amendment Two.
Yep, Amendment Two is the same thing, only it deals with, um, middle school being a part of high school athletics, and again, reflects the, the trimesters that some schools are doing.
Thank you.
Joel seconds.
Wade, and then Joel. On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll do Amendment Three, on page thirty-five.
These next two, number three and four, uh, this must be something that, that the Activities Association runs into, is that they, parents will say that they are moving to a district, and then their student can, can participate in the new district, but they're not necessarily moving. So this clears it up and says they have to make a bona fide move to the resident district. So both number three and four clear that up. So you can go ahead and go through both of those two.
Okay, I'll take a motion for Amendment Three.
Joel seconds.
On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, I'll take a motion for Amendment Four.
Joel moves.
On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. And then Amendment Five, on page forty.
Yeah, Amendment Five, um, and I can see where this, this could easily happen, and it's happened to us, but we were informed. If a resident district has a student athlete that has, uh, basically broken a high school Activities Association rule and has an ongoing suspension, that needs to carry over to the next school if they were to move. Most schools are good about letting them know, but I could see where, hey, this doesn't happen, so they, this basically says it's the obligation of the rece, sending school that they must notify with this. Which makes sense. It puts the onus on the school that it happened at, and it makes sense that it should transfer.
Is it all in-state, is it out-of-state, coming to South Dakota? Doesn't have any teeth there, does it?
A student who transfers under guardianship from a school out-of-state or from another, so it's, it's both.
Both.
Yep.
Okay.
But that Minnesota school doesn't have the obligation to do that, that's-
Okay, probably not under our rules.
We do, yeah. Doesn't reciprocate, okay.
Tony? On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we got through them all. Uh, next is some staffing, a few of staffing, so it's the hire of Destiny Thomas for first grade teacher.
Yep, she will be coming in and taking Hannah Swenson's job as first grade, she's just received her, or will be receiving her certification, so. Excuse me.
Questions? Take a motion?
Joel moves.
On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire of Krista Shock, kindergarten teacher.
Krista is filling, uh, in for one of our kindergarten teaching positions, and she's coming from Dubrook, where she was the elementary. She, she taught third grade there, and she taught at T prior to that, and she's served as their, uh, elementary school counselor, uh, more, most recently, so. She's originally from Dubrook, familiar with the area, and, um, is gonna be taken over, she wanted to get back in with the, with the kiddos, so. She'll be good.
Okay, cool. Take a motion, Tony? On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire of Hannah Swenson for special ed director.
Yep, we've talked about Hannah taking this position over, we're excited, I think she's excited, we've been forwarding a lot of emails to her and overwhelming, well, and I had a good conversation with her today, she's like, do I gotta wrap my head around this now, I say, no, just wait till school's done, so. We've been keeping her in the loop on things, and, and, and she's been good about asking questions, and wants to, wants to start off on the right foot, and she's actually met with a couple of other sped directors in the area, too, so it's been very beneficial to her.
Awesome.
I will make a motion to allow that to happen.
For the hire. On favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll review the preliminary budget, starting on page forty-two. And I assume we'll go through the info with you, Ellen? I think on the board, so that those viewing can see the same thing we see. No, it's, we're watching you.
Do we need the light off, or not?
Can you see, Caleb? You wanna turn it on? Yeah.
It's that window that gets you, isn't it?
Yeah, and there's no shade, or blinds to cover it.
They don't work?
Is it okay, you think, for you? So in our document-
That starts on page forty-four.
Forty-five, forty-four? Sorry, two, I can't.
I left this one in here, because last year we added changes, I need more, maybe, um, that way we can, we can make any changes to it. What goes on this-
Okay. Sounds good.
No changes yet.
Tomorrow.
Hence why it's plainland. Yeah.
So, tax evaluations, um, this shows the evaluations, the only thing on the ag one for twenty-five, pay twenty-six, I don't have Hamlin or Grant County values yet, which isn't much, we have a tiny, tiny bit from them, so it's not a lot.
Did you just assume last year's values for now, or just?
No, I didn't put, I didn't put anything in, yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't much more, like, if I looked at the ag valuation last year, it was supposed to have any more.
So we're not comparing, on those top two lines, we're not comparing apples to apples, because
Just, yeah, because-
The right one doesn't have those two in, with the left one-
Just the ag, just the ag does not have, um, Hamlin and Grant Counties, because that's the only thing that it, that it affects, is, because it's ag land that would be in our school district. Otherwise, the other numbers, um, are what I just got from, um, the courthouse. And then utilities, we don't get that till way late, um, for the numbers that I used in the actual budget, I did a four percent increase on utilities, I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's what we used last year. But I didn't put that on here.
So on the documents, I used, um-
On the, yes, yep, if we go back, I actually- Right, when, in the, when I figured that what, um, that we would have, yeah. I did a four percent increase on the utility valuation. As you can see, actually, and even, because it won't be that much with the, um, Hamlin and Grant County values, the ag valuation actually went down, and so did the amount that we can levy. Correct. And that'll be, I think that's, I think it's in one of these next ones here. Yeah. Then this is just the levies, it just shows from year to year how the, how the levies have changed. So general fund, looking overall. Yep. It did go down, yes. Yeah, it actually went down. Because- Okay, I don't know, how do I even go back? Backspace, backspace, there we go, okay. Yeah, this one, yeah, you look at this, because the, the sheet that I got from the county, it actually showed that the valuation, yes, did go down. Right, but it, yeah, but it's not very much, but it did, it did go down, yes, yep. Okay, on the, this is the one you want?
Yep. I'm going this one, are you?
Okay. Yeah, it has the last two years, all the levies have gone down. Needs to go up, yeah. Yeah. And for us, yeah, they didn't, so. Anything else on those? Yeah, because it's twenty, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So this is general fund expenditures, we have five million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred forty-two. Of that, it is using two hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-four, the fund balance. Just put in there what the, like, wages and, because that's the majority of it, are the salaries, extracurricular, taxes, benefits. Our projections that we'll get from the wind towers is six hundred eighty-one thousand, um, which is in there. Um, yeah, it's a little bit less, because it's, I think this year it's about seven hundred thousand, last year it was just over seven hundred thousand. And that's, that's a projection, so I'm not, yeah, I'm projecting on that. And then the revenue, um, just breaks it out, four million, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight, and it shows what's local, state, and federal. That amount. Right now it is, but we'll just, we'll be getting, because we just got, like, the tax, we'll get the tax dollars this month and now for the property taxes, so it'll be a little higher than that. But that's what it is right now. Right. Yeah, we didn't, last year, there we didn't-
This year?
Or, or for the, yeah, this year, sorry. Yeah, for this year, we did not. And then I think we just got, it's just, just over seven hundred thousand, I just looked at it today. The wind tower revenue for this year.
Any other thoughts, questions on the general fund? Okay, next capital.
Capital outlay. So twenty-four, twenty-five, um, it was thirty-four hundred dollars a student, and, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, the number that we were given was three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine, and we had, it was five twenty-three, right, Chad? Okay, that we had for students. Five hundred twenty-three is what we have for this year.
And last year, I think we used five twelve.
And last year was five ten, it was five ten or five twelve, I can't, yeah.
I think five ten.
I didn't, I didn't have it on here. Yeah. So this one, they more, let's just tell us what we can-
It's just the student count that changes.
It's based on the number of students, yeah, based on the student count of the year before, and then- It's based on the number of students, yeah, based on the student count of the year before, and then whatever amount, dollar amount on that. Capital outlay expenditures, one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four dollars, and this would include contributing five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine to the fund balance. Some of the things that we have in there, the hundred and fifty thousand for the, for a new school bus, that is when we will get a thirty-five hundred dollar, or thirty-five thousand dollars, excuse me, rebate for that, but the expense is still the hundred and fif, around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty's after the rebate?
Yeah, I've got a, I'm gonna go through capital outlay expenditures as I report with you guys. Just a thirty thousand foot view, so you can see what-
What's in there?
Outside of the payment, the buses in there.
Yeah, and then that's the, yeah.
So, we'll dive into this in a little bit.
Capital outlay payment is, yeah, six hundred and seventeen, so that's, I mean, not quite half of it, just for that. And then revenue sources is just the taxes for two million, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Special education levies for this year for twenty-four, pay twenty-five, we did the levy at one point three-five, and I think it was one point four two something that we could have levied, but we did not levy to the max. The proposed for twenty-five, pay twenty-six is the max levy, and that, that's the max levy, the one point four six two per thousand.
Yeah.
Special education expenditures, one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, ninety dollars, and that includes using twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-three from the fund balance. So, our local, or our, yeah, local Medicaid revenue is one thousand, or excuse me, one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven.
Should we, in considerations taken, I know that's an added director, but we also have added costs of kids going to a different district for, should we put that in there as considerations? The, those students that we have going to center base?
Oh, center base.
Out of district placement?
Out of district placement, that's the words. I think we should put that in the considerations.
Yeah, that's right, because we have a second, I forgot about that. We have a second student. Yep, I can add that to the consideration. Let me find that one quick and jot on here.
Because that's a significant amount, so.
Right, yep.
Out of-
Out of district placement.
Yeah.
One?
Two.
We'll need two, one this year, two next year.
Yeah, so that adds quite a bit of cost to it. Plus, the other thing in this, again, and I mean, we don't have the final numbers, but the cost of, well, the co-op stuff is really, really went up again, yeah.
Did we see that already, and I forgot?
Well, we- I just shared it with Ellen.
Okay, so we haven't seen that.
Yeah, I don't know if that was, was-
No, just our, our movement cost for services.
Like, for speech therapy and occupational therapy and all those that we have, those went up again.
And we haven't seen that yet.
Quite a bit.
And I don't know if you would, I don't know if we'd share, I don't know if you heard me.
We have, I've seen it before.
Have we? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it is good to know.
Yeah, it'll be in.
Okay. Yeah, and if that's the same, because I think last year, trying to remember if we, I think they told us an amount, but I think, I think it was a little bit less than what they, than what they had given us to begin with. But this is the preliminary numbers that were, that were given to us. So, that added a little bit of cost to.
In the numbers and the services we're giving.
Yep.
Our services needed here have increased as well, right? Right.
Right. So, the need is more, so it's more cost to us, yep.
Who's your best customer?
Second best.
Second best customer?
Close. Okay, yeah, we'll go over that, okay.
Food service, just with the numbers I put in here, four hundred and six thousand dollars expenditures, which would include a hundred thousand deficit to transfer from general fund. And I want to take a good look at these once we get, once we're finished up with this year, just kind of see where we-
Do you have it in the preliminary budget already, the hundred dollars?
This is, yes, yep. Yep, that is already in there. And I just left, you know, the climbing prices of products, so, but like I said, I really want to look at this one again. And it can fluctuate too, because we haven't, we don't know what the meal reimbursement rates are yet. And then I'm just starting to work on the food service application, and so if we increase our prices, meal prices, that could affect it also.
We did that last year, and kind of got called back a little bit.
A smidge. It was like cents.
There was one of them that we had to change, I think, like five cents or something, yeah.
But it was, I think, the second.
Every school has a situation with these.
We had to, in, actually, last year, we had to increase our prices for seconds and milk, I think it was, yeah. They required us to, because of where we were at. Yeah, I'm not sure. I think there's some schools that have money, I'm not sure.
It's all over the board.
What's that?
It's all over the board. It's, some are thriving, some are-
Really?
Hanging on.
What's the difference? What ma, what makes the difference?
Good question.
Yeah. I don't know, is it the number of, like, say, free and reduced? I mean, what you're getting, how much you get reimbursed for, probably?
It's a factor for sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Because there's different rates based on, I mean, if you have free meals, reduced meals, or everybody that's paying for meals.
We don't get covered a hundred percent of that, or do we do? Someone does free and reduced lunch?
No, it's not a hundred percent. It's not a hundred percent of what we, like, what we would charge somebody for, for lunch.
So, ultimately, that transfer comes from capital, so.
It comes from capital, we have to transfer it to general fund, and then, yeah, yep. So, in the budget, it's, it's showing that we transferred from, from capital to general fund, and then general fund to the food service fund. Two thirty-seven, I was just doing out of cash balance. I mean, I guess which we, we could do that, yeah, that was out of cash balance. Where this, I was gonna transfer out of capital, yeah. There is, actually, in another slide, there is some on the preschool. And we'll go through that when we get to, yeah, when we get to that one. So, here's the other enterprise, and what this includes is driver's ed and preschool. Now that we're charging for preschool, we have to move it to an enterprise fund. So, when we weren't charging for it, it was in the general fund. So, on this one, I'm showing expenditures of a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is a deficit of, still of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight even. The revenue would be grant dollars and then what the parents are paying for it. So, there still would be a deficit. One of the things, I don't know, we apparently may have a student coming in that we would need another para professional in that room. So, that adds a, yeah.
So, preschool doesn't get special ed coverage, so we would need a para to help with that special need student.
Because there's one para in there now, but yeah, there's-
Right.
That doesn't go to spend?
No.
No.
No, yeah, because it's not, the state doesn't provide any funding for preschool.
For preschool, yeah.
Lot of talk about it, but it never happened, sorry.
No, it's okay. To remind me what we're saying, and this is what we're charging for preschool?
Hundred and twenty-five a month.
So, some of that too is based on the number of students, if we would have more students or less students or whatever.
Yeah, right, you don't know.
It could, yeah, it could change some based on the number. This is based on, did you say twenty-four, I think is what, yeah. Four, yeah.
I expect that to go up some.
Does charging change that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, well, that changes the number going down.
I don't, we haven't really seen yet. I mean, we have twenty-five this year, so.
Actually, their early childhood kids, it means that they've been an early childhood, which is part of the special ed program. So, we are obligated to have them. As far as I know, we don't.
It's gotta come out of general fund.
Yeah.
Right, because any of that's, yeah, there's a deficit would come out of there, because there's no, there's no revenue that goes into the other enterprise fund besides, like, the local funding or whatever people are paying.
That's what we've been knocking on the doors to get preschool people. They're gonna be our kids this is the next year, and ninety-five percent of them are gonna be kids.
Yeah. Do we gotta touch it up then, or the legislature?
Yeah.
So, that's where the other, so, in the budget itself, it was a hundred thousand dollars, and then this thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight. Right, how I have it in the budget right now is coming out of capital outlay, going into general fund, and then, and then it's a general fund expense into this other enterprise and food service.
Do we want to put in that considerations taken, charging for preschool as well? In the considerations taken, just point out that we are also already charging for preschool. Just so someone doesn't ask.
Just asking this question, dumb, maybe dumb as heck, but if, if a, if a family brings a child in that needs another para, you still can't charge more for that? Or you just don't?
I think they'll open up a catalog, some litigation if we charge them more, sometimes they have a student or they have a disability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're obligated to take funding, that's why. Yep, I just, I'm like-
Well, that's-
Got that, good.
If we have any other questions, but then we can look at that. That's the end.
It's just important to, you know, get the message out to our community, you know, that's where a lot of dollars go, is to do these projects like this and have preschool, and, you know, we're operating at a loss. It's the value of the education in the community, and the community pays for it, so.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks for that. And then, do you want to go to page forty-two and forty-three?
Forty-three. Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any-
That's the actual prelim budget?
Specific questions on there, but I guess I just went through, I mean, all the requests that we had, went through the budget numbers with increases and stuff, and that's, you know, subject to change with what, there's decisions made on some of that tonight. Hold on.
Any other, any questions, comments?
Just looking at your five-year. So, I understand that for a little bit. So, this year, we went eleven, four, five. Expenditures five, two, next year, five, three, four, seven.
Yeah, and we need to look at, like, that five-year now that, you know what I mean, that we have numbers together again, and, because some of those numbers were hard to do when we were doing the building project. It was, so, it's like, now, hopefully, we can get some better numbers and as the years go, and-
Yeah, it's, probably you'll have to update that every year, knowing that.
Right, yeah. But that's saying, once we have the final numbers, it's gonna be easier to, you know, see a trend, see the trends or whatever on that five-year plan as we put actuals in there.
On the second page here, forty-three, transfers out, you have a hundred and thirty-five, one eighty-eight out of the general fund?
Yep, just what we talked about where it comes.
Same amount under capital outlay?
Because it transfers out of capital outlay into general fund, and then it's transferring out of general fund into other enterprise and food service.
So, hundreds going to food service and thirty-five?
So, those are transfers out. So, now, if you, if you look on the end, or on the first page, forty-two, just above the total means of finance there, there's where you see, so there's the transfer into general fund for the hundred and thirty-five, eighty-eight, and then there's the under food service and other enterprise, those two total, that also.
Yep, got it. The other enterprises, you said that was this last preschool thing we talked about?
Well, the preschool thing, and then driver's ed falls under that too. Driver's ed has been under that before.
Do we have to assess the price of driver's ed, or how's that going?
We, we increased it this year a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I weigh that out, but everything we got into.
Okay.
Try to get as close as we can.
Okay.
On driver's ed, filter net, try to get it net zero.
Well, it should, yeah, it should be, and I, that's what I put in, I just did the, and I don't even know if that's a, but we put the same as income as what we have for expenses.
Anything to stand out to you, or anything you guys want Ellen to look into for the next meeting?
I ask Ellen the same thing. Where do you see the hiccups anywhere there, or?
I don't know, I, like I said, I want to really, like, once we have the final expenses for the end of the year, you know, take a good look at it and see if, like, compare it to what we did this year, and look at next year and say, okay, what's, what's the difference in the, in the two? I mean, what do we have for more expenses, or, yeah, or, or are we off on revenues, whatever, just to kind of tweak it. But like, if you look, oh, I guess I don't have the one from last year, but yeah, our, our revenues are actually less. Did I bring that sheet along? Now, of course, I can't find the one that I was looking for. That just shows the difference, but it shows the, yeah, the amount, because it's actually, for the ag, it's gonna be less than what this year was.
So, we'll review this again in June, just to see if there's any changes between now and then, and then we have to approve it and do the hearing in July. Oh, wait, approve budget in August, sorry.
Right, but we do have to do the hearing, though.
In July, yeah, in the community, and then, so we'll overlook at this the next three months.
Yeah. So, if there's anything that, yeah, that we come up with, that, you know what I mean, that I see that we need to change or whatever. And from, like, original, I mean, we had some, I know some curriculum that came in a lot higher than what we originally had in the budget, and-
Is that all squared away, curriculum for next year?
I think everything, I think we have everything, I believe we have everything in here.
The new stuff and everything, yeah.
Todd, sorry.
No.
Curriculum all squared away, all the new stuff?
Um, yeah, I think we are.
You were, you were preparing, I thought.
Um, yeah, we.
The numbers won't change, is what I was asking.
We probably just wanna look to make sure we have, yeah, that I have everything in here correct, yeah, everything's in there that we had, because, yeah, stuff changes and.
Sounds good.
When we get stuff flying around, it's like it's easy to miss an email or whatever, but I think I have everything in here with the, where we ended up with curriculum, um.
I guess we'll just take some time to look it over and let you know if we have questions.
If you have any questions, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
On it.
So, the strategy is basically we're gonna continue to develop the capital outlay fund? We don't have general fund last for next year's, you can't budget as much, or you can't levy as much?
It just depends on what they tell us, we can levy. We don't, we don't get that till.
Changes every year?
Yeah, changes every year, so it's like we have no idea what we can levy until it gets closer to budgeting and then.
You said, you said max letting on general fund or not?
Yeah. Yes.
I wonder if it, I wonder if that's the thing, I mean, I'm just looking at page twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's seven hundred dollar difference between revenue and expenditures.
Yeah.
Understand we got a balance there. I, I, yeah, help you everything.
You're exactly right, that's the only way we can raise money, and thank God there's flexibility for us to flex it to cover expenditures in the general fund.
Yeah, yeah.
Only thing we got right now.
It's the only thing, it's, every district is that way.
Yeah, cuz you, like, I've seen, you see examples of other districts and they're, you know, transferring, cuz you can transfer forty-five percent of your, um.
Tax.
Yeah, your revenue, you have outlay revenue, you can transfer that to your general fund, and there's schools that do the forty-five percent every year.
They're doing this?
Right, yeah, I just. That one, we got the service for. So, we'll go through the three and a half million pretty fast, once that, I, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know what the balance would be, I guess, fifty-six million by then. That's the only thing we're gonna have, we'd miss that.
Right, the wind tower dollars, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and the wind tower revenue, um.
Some changes.
We get the data shack out there in this area.
There we go.
Bring a lot of money to the state.
State, yeah.
It all goes to the state.
It all goes to the state?
Well, and then it goes, we, school, the way I understand, school, it has, it might wind power, it goes in like, uh, yeah, gold mines, uh, move to the state, but maybe give you all money.
Right, but wouldn't there be, wouldn't there be like property tax, though? That would, that would come to the county bill, right, like, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, that would.
Yeah, you get some of that.
You get some out of that, out of property tax, yeah.
Well, the county does. But one of our schools is.
It's not in our district.
No.
Well, yeah, we probably do not.
So, it wouldn't.
But we might get our increase in kids out of the deal. Maybe. Oh, my God.
Just going, that, that one here, I mean, you know, that, you know, the generator.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's twenty-one acre, two twenty-one acre buildings.
Yeah, substantial.
Mixed messages on how many people are gonna operate, some say a hundred, some say two hundred.
I heard two hundred, yeah.
Some say twenty-five. But I don't, you don't need a lot of those people. Thanks, Ellen.
So, like I said, we'll just keep, yeah, we can, you know, just keep updating it as they have.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Other information, so.
Second page, there were changes, you'll add that, and we'll just fill that in.
Changes since the last time?
It's not our, what page it says.
Well, right, says changes, yes, yep.
With nothing on it?
With nothing on it, yep.
We didn't change anything.
Well, that's what I took from last year, because last year we kinda did the same thing, and then, yeah, as we had changes, just to kinda highlight them on there, on that page or whatever, that we've, that we've made, if we have some changes.
God, where are we? Yeah, okay, good, yeah, now we're on reports. We're gonna move on, if you guys are ready for that. Mr. Sternbeck, so now I gotta find your page of notes.
I have, uh, you have each one of you, I have a folder with, uh, plethora of information, and I will stop, I'll start right on top here, so this will, I'll just go.
Talked about most of these things along the way. Um, first thing, we've implemented leader rounding, uh, we did focus groups with teacher perceptions of admin and the culture of the district. We did focus groups on student perceptions of academics, um, we redefined our school district plan, which I'm gonna go through briefly, and then, um, uh, the scorecard, which is a part of our strategic plan as well. Uh, in looking at next year, we're going to continue the rounding as we, uh, did for the half of the year this year. Score, uh, card is going to work on academic culture and outcomes, and then continue to do, um, teacher and student surveys to follow up on some of the things that they were brought to, to our attention. And then a community satisfaction survey, um, about the profile of a graduate, which, um, is something that we talked about, and they've done with some other districts, and it kinda became, came out of our conversations with, uh, Gail, and, you know, what do we want our kids to graduate, what do we want out of them? Um, and it's something, I don't know if we spent a lot of time, granted, we have a mission statement and, um, those things, but, you know, in some of the districts that she's worked with, it's, it's always been the, the top-down, the superintendent down that says, okay, this is what we want our kids to have when they graduate, and we kinda came at it at a, at a, at a different approach and said, oh, well, granted, there's things that we want as administration, there's things that the teachers want, and there's, moreover, what do the parents want out of a dual graduate when they come? What do, what do they want in their toolbox? So, that's something that we're gonna focus on, and you're probably gonna see some questions in regards to that in the survey I'm gonna send out here at the end of the year. Um, but she posed some good questions, that, some open-ended questions, that I hope we get some, some good feedback on, and then I think we can, you know, tailor some of the things in our strategic plan to, to fit those in some of the things that we do. We may find that we're already hitting that nail on the head. But it'll be, it'll be good to gauge some feedback, um, and make people think a little bit about what it is, what it, what is it that they want when their kid comes out of, out of here? So, um, on your second page of that first packet that I have stapled, I told I was gonna share you, with you, the student, student perception of culture, and there were some really interesting takeaways that Gail got. She was, she was amazed that, how everybody here gets along, and it's something that resonated in five through twelve, the kids would say, you know, uh, we each have our own niche, but yet we all get along, um, which was very interesting, and I've always said that too. Even when we get kids in, they find their way to, to, to kids that have some of the same interests, um, and, and we don't deal with the, it came out that they, there's not a lot of bullying, everybody respects each other, uh, which was, which was nice to hear. Um, and I'll just go through these. A welcoming atmosphere, strong teacher relationship was an indicator of a, of a small school. Um, connections to the community, advantages of having a small school, um, obviously the social aspects of things, social time built into their routine, positive peer interactions, and then engagement of learning, uh, school culture. They enjoyed interactive activities in math and shop class, they liked the hands-on things. Four-day school week was very popular, uh, learning labs and accessibility to teachers, um, on Fridays as well. Um, instructional practices, this is the one that really stuck out to us, and she said this resonated in, in grades five through twelve as well, was an overreliance on online teaching or learning, maybe showing too much, um, tutorials using computer or things like that. I, I really found that interesting, um, and they wanted more of a traditional way, which is something that we've talked about in the, in, in the past, the desire for more teaching, wanting more active instruction, uh, which is interesting. And I did share this with the staff, and I told them I wanted to meet with them on this, but I, I shared it for them to read, and hoping we have time on Friday to, to go through some of this. Uh, academic stress, school being a routine, and then, um, just being involved in a number of activities. We have a lot of kids that are involved in a lot of things, not necessarily activities, not necessarily sports activities, but there's so many things that we offer here, I mean, and I don't know many kids that aren't involved in anything, so, um, students feel heard if they have, uh, concerns and a call for more independent dependence, which they all want more independence, but they're still kids, and they have to abide by our rules. Uh, what's working well, the support staff, uh, since the teachers and administrators are described as helpful and approachable, um, the community feel, appreciate a tight-knit school, sense of identity, um, and again, engaging activities where students are more engaged. Uh, areas of improvement in instructional quality, and that's pretty vague, less screen time, facilities and food, and they're always gonna complain about the food, uh, take that.
They're terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Boy, they run to, they run to get the food, um, they take that with a grain of salt. Um, recognition and incentives, a dire, uh, desire for more awards, recognition and celebrates, celebrations of student success, which is, was somewhat surprising us, cuz we put a real, a real focus on that, uh, the last couple of years, and I like this last one here.
Sorry, I'm gonna, I was, did she ask, like, what that looks like to us?
Yeah, we had, I, I think we had asked her, do you recall what she said? Yeah, and I, we told her we're surprised on that, cuz it's really been a focus for us, so. Maybe there were just some kids that didn't have any recognition, I don't know.
Maybe.
So, uh, yeah, the last one here, more snow days and safety considerations. I should've.
They want all days.
She asked if there was anything that we wanted to exempt on here, I should've said the food and the snow days. We're actually talking about snow days tonight, so, um, what's that?
That's an old, the old joke is, yeah, the food's terrible, but the portion's good.
Yeah. So, and then there's just a summary here, um, uh, of what we just talked about, so. Uh, your next page on here, I just wanted to go through a couple of things on this scorecard, um, some things that we did change. I mean, this is, we still have this as a scorecard, and we still have our behind-the-scenes, our strategic plan with everything in it. This is just more at a glance, and people can look at it and say, okay, we're focusing on this, what does, what does academics mean? Your third column there, where it says, it used to say student support and student behavior, we took student behavior off. I didn't want that to be a, a misconception for people and thinking we've got a bunch of rotten kids, and all we deal with is discipline, and that's not the case whatsoever. So, we just put on there student support. We have talked a number of times about removing the facilities portion, but it was also a suggestion that we add something, or maybe replace facilities with growth and management. So, we could include facilities in some sort of a finance piece to that, um, and work around that, just kind of a, a growth, um, in management of, of financial funds, things like that. So, a fancy term, if you will. Yeah, so, I just wanted to share that with you. I, I think these can be, maybe be some things that we work on over the summer, um, and, and define those and, and get it ready be- before school starts.
When will we do that?
I think we could do it in probably June or July, we can have, start having those discussions. And then the surveys, as I mentioned previous, uh, which I have on my report here, I'll be sending something out here either the last week or shortly after school, preferably to next week to, to start getting some feedback. Uh, the online registration, uh, I've talked about this extensively, uh, the last couple of years about how we wanna do this, get away from the cards, make that, make that as, as, uh, seamless and easy for parents as possible, so, actually McKenzie and Jeannie have been doing the onboarding of this through our student information system. And actually, they've turned a lot of the, the interface piece on the website over to Michelle, so Michelle has basically taken and ran with the online registration piece, and we will inform parents of how exactly to do that. Michelle will be available at the back-to-school fair to help new families register. There's gonna be some learning curves this first year, but hopefully it's just gonna be a, a process where they can, they can go on, take care of the registration piece of it. It will not negate them from having to come to the back-to-school fair, because there's a, a number of other things that they need to get, but, um, it's just one more thing that we can.
Sit at the table with kids running around.
Yeah, we can move it to online. Uh, playground update, we've had one meeting, uh, and we're planning, uh, Spearscapes, the company that we've engaged with, is coming on Friday to meet with the playground committee, um, and they, the committee has a number of questions, they wanna get a better scope of what exactly we're looking at, costs, those things, so then they can turn around and, and put the product and say, here's the product, here's where we're gonna, where we're gonna raise money, here's how much money we need, those types of things. So, it's kinda moved at a snail's pace, and we finally got them, them coming here, so they're, Spearscapes?
Do you think someone from that group could come and share?
Potentially, they could.
In June or July?
Potentially.
All right, I just wrote down.
I wanna see how the, the meeting goes. That's at eight-thirty this Friday. Next thing on here, I, um, we wrapped up our, uh, our last focus group meeting. We did four focus group meetings this year. We, we talked about a number of things. There are a lot of things that we talk about at the board level, but maybe don't necessarily explain it to the, to the community, or, um, we start, we start every, um, focus group meeting out with a, kind of a icebreaker and, and introductions every time. Uh, we talked about the family, family-friendly walkthrough update, a lot of the things that we did with them this year. I, actually, Angie Lynch, one of the gals from the Family Engagement Center introduced, uh, she spoke with all the superintendents on Wedes- Wednesday and was, um, very, uh, very appreciative and, uh, of what dual had done, cuz we were their first pilot program and all the things that we did, so. I've been fielding a lot of questions from superintendents on, you know, how, how did that go, what, what did it involve, so it, it's a good thing, uh, it's a good thing for, it was a good thing for the school and for, for parent involvement. Um, we talked about the playground, uh, we talked about the literacy grant and us not getting it, and then I gave them an update on, uh, our continuous school improvement stuff, uh, the focus group. I talked about staffing changes, I also talked about the online registration form, and then we always end our focus group with a brainstorming session, and, uh, it was agreed upon that we're gonna find some more parents. We, we just don't get great attendance, and it's not the same people every time, so we figure if we had a bigger, bigger pool, we could at least have six to eight parents there every time and, um, and move on. So, we will be doing that again quarterly. What's that?
Parents are, are you, you make, are you selecting the parents who are out there, or you?
We have, we have, and then I, I send out, like, this year I preset all of the dates, and then I just send, send them out, put them in your calendar, and then I send out a reminder about a week before, and then just say, hey, let me know if you can make it or not. Most of them are pretty good about getting back to me.
I'm assuming some of the parents that have kids that graduated, or have kids in school.
Yeah, they don't, they have, they have.
I just didn't know why you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we had an academic committee meeting, um, both Todd and, uh, Waiter on, excuse me, Tony and Waiter both on that, along with the, uh, the administration and four teachers. We met on April twenty-third, uh, we just. We met on April twenty-third, uh, we just, we talked about a number of things, just the purpose. A lot of the same things, providing feedback, some of the things that we're talking about. We talked about dual credit, uh, attendance, we talked about our academic awards coming up, student and staff recognition, some of the things that we've done there. The two new programs, Educators Rising and HOSA. And then I talked about, um, some of our sped changes that are coming up with hiring Hannah Swenson. And then we talked about, uh, some curriculum changes, um, all of the testing updates that we went through. And then we talked a little bit about, uh, cell phones and what's working, not working, and some of the implications that we, that we've run into with students. And we agreed to, um, that we would be meeting again, um, next year. We met one per semester this year, so. And I've got some younger, younger teachers on there too, so there were some things that, that they weren't aware of and provided some input into this as well, so. So, we brought some closure to that. The next thing I have here are the snow days, and I just wanna preface this. I, I printed off a copy for you guys to take a look at. This year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we forgave two snow days before we decided to make up any snow days. Now granted, we only had two snow days, so we didn't make any up. We never talked about it when we put the calendar together, so it was kinda my understanding, okay, we're not gonna make anything up. As soon as we have a, have snow day number one, we're gonna go to the dates listed there. So, this actually, when did this come up? I've had a couple, I've had a couple, yeah, negotiations, so. I was not on the same page as, as Danae on this, Danae's like, I'm not so sure we, maybe it's understood that we have two days, don't have two days, so.
Well, the staff wanna know if we, if we, obviously, snow days, are they getting paid for it? Because for last year, there was a lot fewer, we, we pay in front of the parents regardless of if we have them.
And it came up, uh, when.
If we, if we just make them up right away, then that's a report. But I just wanna make sure we were on the same page about.
It came up when I talked to the bus drivers too. So, I just wanted some clarification from the board where you guys wanna go with it. We either forgive the two days or we don't forgive the two days, it's that simple.
Because we have one thousand eleven hours. How I'm understanding is that we, so that was lower, the lowest we'd ever wanna go. If we had any snow days, we automatically make them up and not forgive them. Is that how you guys remember this?
Yep.
Yep, we decided not to go to school earlier that week.
Gotcha.
So, since we're not giving any snow days to them because they're making them up automatically.
That's how I understood it too, so I will just clarify that. Nope, that's fine. Thank you. Uh, staffing, uh, wrapping up some, uh, staffing things we got here. So, right now, Todd and I, our schedules haven't meshed, so I've got a title position open and we interviewed two people for that today. And we'll be wrapping that up on Thursday. And then I will be interviewing, um, some coaching candidates as well, so we'll have that wrapped up by the end of the week. So, um, hopefully by Friday I can email and let everybody know where we landed with those things. The workforce grant that Katie Hinker had applied for, we did not, uh, receive that. But I do wanna recognize Katie for that and the, and the work that she put into that. It's always appreciated, even though, uh, it wasn't this year, maybe down the road it, it certainly can be, so. Capital outlay, I just wanna piggyback off of the proposed budget, I've got your next two items here. I just wanted to go through these things right here. I know, uh, Ellen had the bus in the budget at one hundred and fifty thousand. We had to add a few dollars to that because, um, Ellen had a conversation with Ron White and there are some surcharges or tariffs or things that may be coming that may add a little bit more to that. So, I think a hundred and fifty may be high, but we're just covering our bases there. I have been informed that buses will or already are at that hundred and fifty mark, um, if not higher. So, that is what we're gonna be looking at for a new bus down the road. Uh, keep in mind, we got that thirty-five thousand dollar rebate once we destroy, uh, the bus, uh, and that will be paid back to us. Uh, technology, H and S means hardware and software. This is everything, this is, uh, computer rotations, software licensing, uh, website, you name it, one hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Do you know if that's staying high last, than last year?
I would say it's right in the ballpark.
Similar?
Similar. Yep. Heating and cooling units, this is a, this is a, a total estimate. In talking to Ellen today, I don't know as if we've touched the one hundred thousand we budgeted for this year.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. Yeah. So, it's, it's a dollar amount that we have to, we have to budget for. Uh, curriculum, it's not getting any cheaper. At a hundred and thirteen thousand, we've got some high school social studies and a, a new, uh, reading curriculum in the elementary, uh, extensive, um, very good though. Uh, athletics, this is gonna be uniforms and miscellaneous items that needed to be purchased for all sports. Forty-five thousand. Teacher admin and maintenance requests, um, that's, that's a number of things. From furniture to what Andrew needs to get by for the year, it's a, it's a, it's, I've gone through all of these things and I don't know. Uh, Andrew's got some things in there. There's some furniture, some tables that are needed in the high school, it's just a lot of little things. No, there's no really big items in there. Concrete, if you take a look at your next page here. I have hired bootals to, to do the concrete. That top picture, that is the entrance for the second and third grade classrooms. And the closer you get to that door, it's not even and it's completely pitted out. The whole section, what's that? Yeah, that whole section is, is horrible, so they're replacing that. And obviously, if you came in, uh, the front administration here, you can see rebar in our steps. We're getting that, that whole section out to the, out to the curb replaced too, so. I've already talked to Steel Place downtown, the welding place. Supreme! Sorry, Joel.
Did you hear the sentence?
Yeah, I know, I know. They're gonna come and help us out, they're gonna cut the, the, the guide rails off there and, uh, we're just gonna mount them to the, to the existing cement, once that gets done. Right now, yeah, they're, right now they're cemented in, so we'll just cut them off right at the bottom, so. Yeah, yep, maybe two inches shorter, but, oh, maybe not. So, yeah, so that's, uh, like I said, about, uh, concrete, uh, flooring. I've got, uh, carpet going in the second grade classrooms and I've got, uh, the LVT, which is similar to what was in the front lobby of the stage gym, that gray stuff. So, that's going into the third grade classrooms.
But how come carpet on one grade?
I let them choose what they wanted. Yep, they just thought it would be easier to clean. Third graders, third grade teachers thought that would be easier to clean, so. The LVT stuff, so, yeah. It depends on how much you sit on the floor, and they may put a rug down too, I don't know. Copy your contract, sixteen thousand dollars. We're replacing the lighting in the bus garage with some HD, uh, lighting. It's dark in there, so we're gonna get a new ballast and, um, turn that all into, to, um, LED lighting. Library book budget, five thousand, and we're getting some acoustical ceilings in our chorus room, which didn't get done this year, it echoes like crazy in there, so, um, save on people's ears, so. Yeah. I will do that.
They're good about, yeah.
Yeah.
Who's doing that?
Super. I'll take it. Yeah, your hus- your husband's doing it.
I was just at the same.
I bet he is.
I don't know, I think I'd have to do that.
Yeah, they're, they're good about. They're good about that, I got a good rebate from them and I put in new geothermal unit.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, go ahead, that's all I have. And then obviously, regular board meeting, didn't include graduation, which is Saturday this week. So, that's all I have.
Graduation's Saturday one.
She has to.
Um, so the next meeting was on your list as well, that was June ninth?
Yep.
And maybe when we get to the end, we'll talk about what was on my list.
All right, Principal Hunt.
First of this one, let's get put on my list, but, um, but last week I'd written an article about the grading scale. And I didn't just be getting other calls, um, it was a very much, uh, during the grading scale conversation, it was a few months ago, a teacher was starting, we asked him if I'd be open to working with him at the addition of the minus. Students' grades without the pluses and minuses, we end up with a very large percentage of the class being rated as number one and having a four-point-oh. But some of those four-point-os could be with a ninety-five percent in each of the classes. So, it's not necessarily truly representative of what students are truly achieving. And so I dug into the percentages of this year's freshman class just to see what the impact would be. And I just picked the freshman class because I didn't have any preconceived notions about where they were or anything like that. So, I just kinda took a look at all of those and saw students that it would impact if we were to have pluses and minuses this year, what grades would go up, what grades might end up being pushed down into like a B minus that would currently be an A, or not a B minus, sorry, a B plus. This is why I get into trouble because I misspeak. Well, right now, yes, they would be at an A, but they might get pushed down into like a B plus, you know, using the different grading scales. So, I brought it up to staff at one of our Friday staff meetings and high school staff was unanimous that we needed to go back to pluses and minuses. And, um, in writing the article, my idea with it was to just kinda start opening up the conversation and I wrote it too quickly and very much misspoke. Uh, what we're looking at is reverting back to the previous plus-minus grade scale that we had, which was, um, the, the A plus was like ninety-nine point five to a hundred percent and that would be weighted at a four-point-three-three, not a four-point-oh. And then your A grade would be the four-point-oh. And then going down from there, three-point-six-seven, I believe, would be an A minus. So, it's, it's meant to give students a little bit more incentive to work that little bit extra harder to get to like the A versus an A minus and just make sure that we're able to differentiate between. Off the top of my head, I can't remember, but.
We share a lot of the same thing about.
Yes. Yep, and I did share the, the grading scale with the staff last week and the only feedback that I got was, this one looks good. So, this Friday I plan on having that face-to-face conversation and then can share that out. Yep. Uh, the second thing was just a recap of the scholarship and academic awards, uh, from last Thursday. And I just want to say thank you to all of the community partners and the donors and really good turnout and it was really neat to see that much money go to our students and it was, it was amazing. Generosity is appreciated.
And thanks to Ms. Ketchaw for putting that on, but maybe you're gonna get.
Yep, that was, that was a huge undertaking.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Ketchaw.
Yeah.
Um, last week we also celebrated our teachers and our staff in Teacher Appreciation Week. We did a lot that was centered around staff and then we did some, one thing that was centered around teachers as well. So, that was a lot of fun, we didn't quite get Chad into a ringmaster outfit, but we were close. He just got out of it because of the superintendent meeting. Um, graduation is this weekend, we'll rehearse on, um, Friday, so I'm excited to see what that is all about. Our staff got together and decided to do something special for our seniors this year. And so I'm excited to see that, we are going to present that to our seniors after rehearsal. And so I thank our staff for their generosity for that and it was a really cool idea. Jessica Fulk was the one that got that off the ground. It's been a lot of fun doing the shopping and everything for it too.
Don't go into Chad's office right now, I heard.
Yeah. Next week, we'll have the eighth grade wax museum, another thing I'm super excited to see, Dusty's been talking that up. Um, it is currently scheduled on Tuesday, but I know he was looking at possibly moving it to Wednesday because of activities. So, I'll confirm with him on the day and time. We'll celebrate our middle school awards on Wednesday afternoon, that'll be with eighth grade graduation. As far as recognizing staff, I wanna take a moment and recognize Emily Brown as a first full-year teacher. I know she came in halfway through the year last year, but this is her first full year. I've just really appreciated the conversations with her and seeing classroom management and I just really think that she has done a really nice job this year and I've appreciated the work that she has done. Uh, we got to celebrate our Students of the Month, those are all listed, that is for April, including our honorary CTE High School Student of the Month, Michelle Gross. She took aviation and drones as a class and she did pass the test, so she can now operate drones.
That's great news, congrats, Michelle.
And then we recognized one middle schooler with our cardinal cards last month and we recognized fourteen high schoolers.
I know you say this every month, but can you explain what that means when you recognize cardinal cards? It's just kids that have gotten it, it's students that have gotten, so like middle schoolers, one middle schooler got a cardinal card last month and fourteen high schoolers?
Yep.
Okay, and it, no, because it's different in elementary where we, they get a lot of them and then we do drawings. So, I just wanted to make sure that, because that would be funny too, if you had like high schoolers getting drawn for cardinal cards, but.
Which we do, uh, we do draw for them every Thursday. They get to spin the wheel and they get a prize, whether it's a tardy pass, homework pass, um, pop, candy.
That's awesome, so there's an incentive.
There's, yep, there's an incentive. I'm not sure why this month was very light on the middle school ones.
They're busy, it's the end of the year. I know why.
But I know it's, I, it's May so far, we've had a lot of middle schoolers in May, so I think.
Okay, made up, made up. They're so quiet.
I like that you do that, that, so that surprises me that, it must be the kids that aren't winning those that are saying that they don't get recognized on this survey.
Right, right.
That's one reason we were a little bit shocked when I saw that, because we do the Student of the Month, we do the cardinal cards and we do try to recognize kids when we see them.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Yep.
All right, Principal Ralph. Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
All right, um, on my report, you can see the April Students of the Month as well as the April Cardinal Card winners. Um, I wanna take a minute to recognize fourth grade teacher Kara Zog, um, relatively new to the district still. Go get her, she is open to change, open to looking at reviewing curriculums for me. Just always searching for what's best for her kids. Uh, great at building that relationship and getting to know her students so that she can meet them where they're at and, uh, yeah, just does a lot of great things and is always honest. You know, if something's, if we're struggling in an area, she points it out and says, we, this, we need to look at this or, you know, those types of things, so. Just really appreciate, uh, the great team player and the effort that she's put forth this year and, and in previous, so. Um, third through fifth grade music concert. music concert and the fifth grade band concert will be held, uh, tomorrow night at six thirty in the Stage Gym. Uh, South Dakota assessment, we have pretty, we have wrapped up all of the elementary, um, in that testing. Pretty much-
Next thing I didn't put on there, it is our elementary field day next Monday. Uh, section of students will go out in the morning. I will be grilling hot dogs out at the football field for lunch and then, uh, the other group comes out in the afternoon. Uh, with that, I also reached out to the PFL and NHS. Who gets more hands up?
It, it's a lot when you have two hundred and seventy kids out there and minimal staff, I mean, our staff, which we just can't, can't get them rotated and through. But I want to give those two organizations, those two groups a shout out. Uh, we have sixteen kids volunteering their time in the morning and then an additional sixteen in the afternoon. So, um, teachers that, uh, Mrs. Tocconi, Mrs. Kendop kinda lead, getting our field day rolling along, uh, everybody helps in it, but, um, they're kinda the, the ones that, we need more help. We need more help. Can we get anything? Um, with a simple reach out, about two days later, I had, I had kids signed up and ready to roll with that. So-
That's enough?
And I think we're, yeah, they were, I said, what's the most you would want? And they're like, well, sixteen would probably be enough. Then we could place them in groups. Had that in a short amount of time. We can live with eight, but sixteen would be even better, you know, type of thing. So.
But, um, our kids will do also and create that interaction with our elementary students. So, um-
Appreciation.
Things. Um, I don't know if you've, you've seen a picture float around of, um, but-
No.
Horn and Cotton Camp staff members on the day on Wednesday. Unfortunately, our
ringmaster was unable to attend. So McKenzie stepped in and filled that role. Um, he had a meeting as we were planning this, uh, neglected to mention that until the morning. Oh, no, that's not true. He did, he did. But it was, it was-
There was several, thank you, TC on that.
Them, the teachers, how, how much we appreciate them, F in general. So it was a good week. Switching over to athletic director, uh, we have finally, this was, this was a huge challenge. It's figuring out a, a night for our spring athletic award banquet. Um, in the past, sometimes our activities held their own and they scheduled it on their own. In the last couple of years, we've kinda tried to get that bigger version of it where we do our fall, winter and spring sports. The spring one is always very challenging. Uh, there's golf, there's track, there's softball every, every day. And when they're both home and you both, you think that they're gonna get done in time, there's something that happens. But we have landed on a date with that for May twenty-seventh. Um, we realized this is after we were out of school, but I had no other dates on that last week of school. So, yep, and, uh, that will be the first round or the region tournament game or the Sodak sixteen game, I should say. Um, that night, I talked with Mrs. Hagberg. They will easily be done by that night. And if you recall, last year, um, we had, they had a softball game that night and it was, it was kinda neat to have all the girls walk in in their uniforms and dirty and, um-
They're gonna do that again this year.
Yeah, and I think they're planning on that. And they, she said, no, that worked out great, which I was appreciative of that flexibility and willingness to. And I said, what happens if we lose that game? Is what it is. We still come and recognize our kids and, and provide the support for them. So, uh, region track, golf, uh, softball dates and locations are, uh, there is no more, uh, region track technically. It's more of a last chance meet. That's gonna be held in Sioux Valley. Uh, golf, we switched regions in golf this year. Um, typically, our region has been in Watertown, uh, at the two courses, but we will be- They got rid of the pre-region for golf. Um, so our kids really didn't have a great opportunity to see the course prior to that region event. So I was contacted by James Valley Christian AD. Just wondered if we'd be interested in joining their meet, which happens to be tomorrow on that same golf course. So, yeah, let's, let's do that and give the kids an opportunity to see it. And, um, with visiting with other ADs, Broadland Creek has a tournament in the next two weekends leading up to that. So there was no time for our, to send our kids down for a practice round or do that. So this proved to be a good opportunity for them to, to get on the course and see it prior to the, the region meet. Um, softball, we talked, just got that kinda talked about, May twenty-seventh, uh, at this time. And a lot has to change, but we will be hosting that more than likely. I shouldn't say will be, but more than likely, we'll be hosting that, uh, game. Like I said, a lot has to change between a week, in a week of regular season play, two weeks. Um, state track, golf and softball dates are all listed there. Tracks in Sioux Falls, golf is at Prairie Winds in Watertown and the boy, that, sorry, girls are at Prairie Winds and the boys are at Cattail in Watertown, um, June second and third. State Track's twenty-ninth, thirty, thirtieth and the thirty-first. And then state softball will again be in Watertown on the fifth, sixth and seventh.
Aberdeen.
Or, excuse me, Aberdeen for softball. So, um, we'll see where the rest of the season takes us. It's been, uh, it's been a great spring this year. Our track kids are running fantastic. Softball's doing well and, um, golfers are out there playing golf. So it's been good. They've been playing as well. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
We have, we got both our track meets in this year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I did. Okay, thank you, thank you. Ellen, do you wanna do your business manager report next?
Much working on budget, but, um, school board, um, open positions, we had the two positions. We will not be having any election, will not be having any election. Wade and Enable did petitions and that was the two positions that we have open. So, um, we'll not have that. And then we had a safety visit. Um, we have our workers comp through associated school boards and they have a gentleman that comes out, a loss control consultant that comes out and does a walkthrough and visits with us and stuff. So, um, gives us recommendations of things that we could do. Um, anyway, until Chad and I and Andrew will sit down and go through those and-
Is it a lot?
There's been a lot on there, but he just brings up not necessarily things that he sees here. He brings up things that he's seen at other schools. And so there's a lot of things on the list that, yeah, it's like, okay, this school does this, this school does this. And so it's recommendations, uh, whether we do them or not. I mean, we, some of them, and yeah, we've done some of them. Some of them, it's like, no, it's probably not something that we're gonna do here. But we just go through them all and, um, each year and-
Yeah, it works.
Look at them and hopefully makes some improvements.
Does, yeah.
Yeah, true. He wouldn't come.
We do that. I mean, that's the job.
Yep. Well, to try to help, yeah, to help out. Yep, absolutely.
Good. And then you worked on the budget. Thanks for all of that. You got a lot done. Thank you. Okay, Wade, wanna report on NESC?
We got the, uh, in terms of April, we had our, actually, office on the 30th. Finance, uh, not a lot of, uh, anything, uh, regarding there, which would be a very platform. If you are, very much, you call that. Director's report, um, condition of the property, um, also, the spec orders, uh, it's not good, it's not good here. I'm starting to correct them, so it's a pathway, it's all secondary. Talking about the early grant, celebration, talking about commission rates, uh, the path rates. Two thousand five seventy-one, second placement is fifty thousand seven twenty-six and third placement forty-three thousand. Um, editor advisory, uh, report, uh, she discussed early grant there as well. We have pathway changes, discuss behavior specialists, um, and discuss student screening, procedures and forms, uh, administrators. Uh, we did a tour of the NESC building, uh, that's, and talked about the gymnasium that the city owns and obviously not ever listed in that. There's definitely some changes. Some repairs that need to be done to that, to their building as well. Uh, so we're gonna buy repairs and facility expenses coming up in the near future for, for those repairs too. So, um, I just have, this is just a kind of a reference, but, uh, this just is a twenty-six, um, assessment basically on, this is as of twelve one twenty-four, just to give you an idea, kinda where, where our district ranks versus the other districts. And I don't really have a lot to discuss, I guess, just more of a game of reference and what our financial responsibility and type of, for our districts. So, yeah, you can see we're at three twenty-seven and I think Sioux Valley's at three eighty-three.
It's like, bro, keep it Watertown, they just do their own thing.
They do their own.
This is helpful. Thanks for sharing this.
I guess that's all I have. Let's see if there are any questions.
Is this public information or where do you say?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it was shared in the public forum after, you know, that meeting. Yeah.
Yeah. We have one higher student counts. We have the higher spend enrollment number and dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, the next thing is talk about the next meeting. So as we said, I already won it, but I just kinda wanna go through the agenda items. First, we'll talk about the budget again. I wondered, um, Ms. Han and Mr. Ralph, if we'd be ready for the academic retreat in June or if we should give you more time?
Nope, we'll be ready.
And should we do it at the regular meeting or should we, yes, okay. June ninth?
We can get you in on, on Zoom or something.
Well, it's either that or we wait till July. We don't have to do it in June. We could do it in July instead. And so then you can report. Oh, duh, never mind. That's already a long night. Sorry. June, okay. Sorry. Todd, I'm sorry.
No, that's typically pretty late.
Yeah, right. And obviously, nothing would've changed. Yeah, if you wanna give yourself some more time and then both not put it all in your tab. Yeah, I agree. That's a good idea. Yeah. Move it, school. Yeah. Yeah. Know what you're handling going into it. So we'll move that to August. Okay, sorry. Um, other, also is, uh, the first reading of the handbooks. Are you guys looking at making changes to the handbooks, you think? Okay. Will they be ready by then or should we hold off? Yeah. Okay. So we'll plan on that for the June meeting. Right. So you'll have to hand that off to Todd or Chad, whichever one you feel. Not getting you off the hook. Um, we have on here to do the communication parent survey res, like, look at the strategic plan, but also go over those survey results. Will that, that be done by June meeting?
Yeah, I should have that by August.
And then we can look at how that impacts the strategic plan and if we wanna make any changes.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll put together, uh, the changes, just like, just changes for the strategic plan and what you talk about. So just put it, we'll put down this especially.
Okay.
I've also got a number of policies that I have been sent out that need to be amended or put in place.
Recommended by ASBSD?
Yeah. And gymnastics. I'll provide some fair feedback.
Yep.
That was right.
Policies?
Policies.
And then if there's a playground update, we'll do that too, if we're ready for that. Otherwise, that could be in July or whenever it's ready. Any other June? It's kind of a lot.
Okay.
Sounds good. Anything else from you guys for June? Okay. All right. Other business? No other business?
Something's there.
Did you guys have other business? No, nobody else? Okay. Well, now we're gonna go into executive session, the first one. There's two on the list. We're gonna do the first one. So we'll go into exec session pursuant to co, South Dakota qualified law, section one twenty-five, section four subset, excuse me, section two subset four for negotiations. I can't talk. All right. So we're gonna go in at eight oh one. I'll take a motion. Take a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?